Mr. Tilly. Counselor tonight.
I tried to retract my vote for you. So I could vote for you or nominate you for Chair. Retract my vote for him.
I retract it.
Yeah. But I tried. I tried. I just assumed that was my seat.
It is. Put your mics on, though.
Now I'm going to wait for Jeff, just one second.
Thank you for joining us.
That was like making an entrance.
I'm glad Mr. Mitchell's here with us. Wondering who his stand-in was.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the February 20th, 2020 meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of West Sacramento. Per tradition, we always begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to call on our city attorney, Mr. Mitchell, to lead us in that.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with request-to-speak cards that look like this. If you do wish to speak on any items that are on the agenda or even not on the agenda, please fill it out, include the agenda item, and hand them to the clerk Katie on the side, and she will pass it up to me. Reminder that some people get nervous speaking in public, so please keep any applause or otherwise comments to a minimum, and be sure to speak into the microphone. So, okay. With that, first item on the agenda is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Just one reminder that the commission is prohibited from discussing items that are not on the agenda but are brought forward at this time. So I would like to invite Mr. Price to come up and speak. And if you could start by introducing yourself, that would be great.
Good evening, Commissioner. Is this on? Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Ron Price. I live in the Ironworks Development, and I'm here tonight to represent the Ironworks Homeowners Association. A couple of weeks ago, we received a letter from Mr. Tilly about design review comments on the proposed West Gateway Place Phase Two affordable housing project. We submitted a letter to Mr. Tilly. I'm here tonight to further clarify our position, which mainly centers around the parking for that project and for the existing project. Phase One, West Gateway Place, which is on the corner, currently has 77 units and provides parking permits for each one of those units. But every night, 30 vehicles are parked on the street, which is about 39 percent of the 77 units. They're parked on the street, they're parked on private property, and they encroach into the Ironworks. We have security every night that tags the cars and chases them out. But Phase Two of the West Gateway Place project eliminates 14 of the existing parking spaces. So we have 30 vehicles parked on the street, 14 parking spaces eliminated, so that leaves about 44 vehicle spaces that need to be provided in Phase One, which already exists. So Phase Two, which is a 60-unit apartment, the plans only indicate 30 parking spaces provided, 21 onsite, five of which are handicapped, and nine spaces across Tower Gateway at the new city parking lot. So using the same ratio of 39 percent for overage guests, second cars, Uber, Lyft, because affordable residents can make money with an extra car, that equates to about 23 projected vehicles that'll be parked on the street daily. So 30 spaces not provided, 23 vehicles projected, equals 53 vehicles. A total between Phase One and Two, 44 plus 53, equals about 97 unparked cars in my neighborhood and encroaching on the Ironworks Development. So I don't know how this is going to be managed. I don't know if only renters without vehicles are going to be allowed in Phase Two. Is there going to be a parking lottery for parking spaces? Or is the city going to donate all the 75 spaces that are in the Tower Gateway parking lot to the residents of the new or the combined West Gateway Place Phase One and Phase Two? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price. With that, we will move on to General Administrative Function B, Correspondence and Staff Communication from the Planning Commissioner's Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, I just have one item to note tonight, which is some very positive news. Quite recently, our former, now former clerk Katie Rogers was promoted to administrative analyst just recently, and so she, this may very well be her swan song with us at the Planning Commission, but she'll still absolutely be with the city and just doing bigger and better things than what she, I think, richly deserves and will do for the city. So we will continue, I'll continue to obviously be your contact and continue to work with you, and we will continue somehow, some way, to deliver your packets to you on our normal course of business. But I did want to make that note tonight because I know this is a very exciting moment for Katie, and I hope you're all very excited for her for this new opportunity.
Thank you, and congratulations, Katie. Next item on the agenda is disclosure of ex parte communication. At this time, planning commissioners should disclose any communications they've had on items on the agenda.
I've had conversations with folks who were stakeholders, basically prospective residents on Item Two, but this was all well over a year ago. And, but yeah, I'll just, I'll share that.
Similar to the Vice Chair, I had conversations over a year ago with a prospective resident.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on, consideration and approval of the minutes from the February 6, 2020 Planning Commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Question from Mr. Sternfels.
Second.
Second from Mr. Leonard. Sorry, Leonard, I cannot get that right. On favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Regular agenda, Public Workshop on the Washington Commons Cohousing Project. Mr. Laffey.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. This item is, before you tonight, is a workshop item on the Washington Commons Project. It's a 35-unit, four-story multifamily project. There'll be condo units, so for sale. The property is located at 316-330 G Street. That's at the northeast corner of Fourth and G Street in the Washington District of the city. It's within the Washington District-specific plan, and the site is little over a half-acre. And the site has a few trees on the site, but they're all going to be removed with this project because the building takes up almost the entire site. So here are some elevations or some photos of what the building will look like or is proposed to look like. Like I said, four stories, 35 residential units. There are 35 garage parking spaces on the ground floor. There is gray fiber cement siding on the exterior along with white, gray, and tan stucco and some wood accent cladding. Now, the applicant has a very detailed presentation on the design, so I won't go too much into that, but I will talk about what the process is and what's required. So the entitlements needed, they need design review approval. It's within the Washington Plan. They need deviations from that Washington Plan that was originally approved back in the 90s, and since then, this property has been upzoned. It's now waterfront, which has a much higher density that's allowed, and the current Washington Plan, the development standards aren't really applicable for a much higher density project. So we are in the process of updating that plan, and we should have a draft available for your review sometime in the next few months. So we are, there are some minor deviations that we are, applicants requesting and staff is supportive of. And then additionally, a tentative subdivision map for condominium purposes so these units can be for sale. So the minor deviation, one of them is for setbacks. The Washington Plan requires a 10-foot minimum setback and no more than 20-foot setback off the street property line. Because this is a small site, those setbacks would really constrain the area you could build on. So the applicant is proposing a setback of three and a half feet along Fourth Street and a three and a half to 12-foot setback, depending on where you are along that front edge along G Street. This is more of an urban-scale project, and it's really where we're heading for that area, and it's what the zoning, waterfront zone intends for. And then the other, it's not really a deviation, but it's something to point out, is the location of the trash enclosure. There's not, the current Washington Plan doesn't have specific requirements on location of the trash enclosure, but I do want to point it out and get the commission's feedback on the location, is it's fairly close to the corner, and it has its separate door to get the trash out. That would be, involved having a separate curb cut and on trash day, having no parking for that area of the front edge. So the trade-off with this, having that trash enclosure there, is they get an extra parking space in the garage so that you have one parking space for every unit. But the downside is that it would be less landscaping in the landscaping strip and a curb cut to roll the trash out, and on trash day, no parking in that location. So with that, I'll open up for any questions. We are looking for feedback on this item, on the deviations and the design. The applicant has a very, much more detailed presentation on the project itself, and we're hoping to return later this spring.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, that's something that's a little new. The Planning Commission, since this project requires another entitlement, i.e. the map, the Planning Commission will be the design review authority on the project also. In past years, that had not been done by the Planning Commission. It'd been done by staff, and we sort of had that, you know, parallel process, but now it's one package that's fully in the Planning Commission's domain. So design stuff is very much one of the things that we will ask the Planning Commission to ultimately take an action on.
Okay.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
I just want to ask a couple of questions around parking. So the first is, has the city entertained or considered what type of street parking is going to be around this? I'm assuming right now it's just parallel parking, but would we look at alternative parking, like angled parking or something?
That is being looked at for district-wide as part of the Washington Plan update. I don't have any specifics on street parking for this street currently, but that is being looked at holistically.
Okay, that's a good thing to consider. And then the other piece is, not that I want to put more requirements on this, but my understanding, and this will be a question for the applicant when they do their presentation, is it's looking like we're at about a one-to-one parking ratio, but I also understand that some of the targeted populations might be retired populations. We have currently two ADA spots, and I just wanted to see if there's been any thought to addressing those. So you don't actually have to respond, that will be something for them to respond to. I think that's it.
Are there any other questions for staff before I open the public workshop?
Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Laffey, confirm my recollection or tell me I'm wrong, but in the immediate area, particularly on the lots on G and Fifth, and also the houses on G, between Fourth and Fifth, we've approved projects that also have similar setbacks. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. This Savoy project, a small lot townhome project, 25 units, I believe, got approved a few years ago, and they have zero setback along G Street. I believe Fifth Street as well.
So it seems to be a common request in this area for projects that are coming up and something we've approved before.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will open the public workshop and invite the applicant up.
Good evening.
Again, if you could start by introducing yourself, that would be helpful.
I will. My name is Kim Olson. I'm an architect with Mailham Architects. We're based out of Portland, Oregon. This is my colleague Seth Moran. He works with MFA Architecture in Portland. And for the past five months, we have had the pleasure of working with the Washington Commons Group and learning more about West Sacramento and finding time to be here. Some of the residents are actually in the audience tonight and would like to share a few comments with you as well. Before we dig too far into it, I wanted to share with you, Washington Commons is a cohousing project, so it's not a typical condo project. Cohousing is a type of community that is unique in three major ways. One is that the communities are intentional in their design. The founding members are part of the design process, and they think a lot about how the design of the facility will facilitate human interaction. Secondly, it's intentional in terms of programming. The people inhabit it have chosen to be part of a self-governed community, and the root of everything that they're doing is how they form a strong community in support of each other and in support of the neighborhood. Lastly, cohousing is about intentional place. The communities form around a specific neighborhood, and the group has been so excited about the development in West Sacramento and has been so excited to be part of that, that it's been really inspiring for us to see that energy and that passion come to the area. One of the things about cohousing is the first modern cohousing was built in Denmark in 1972, so it's not some sort of social experiment, right? It's something that's been around for quite a long time. In the U.S., it's becoming a stronger and stronger movement every day. The first one in the United States was actually Mirr Commons over in Davis, which was developed in 1991. South Side Park is one that is here in Sacramento, and we've met there a few times as we've been working on this project, and that was developed in 1993. The basis of design and a lot of the precursor to the project in West Sacramento is a project that's in Portland called PDX Commons. And what's different about that from some of the more traditional cohousing projects is that it's really intended to be part of an urban neighborhood. And so we have worked hard with them to come up how we can house all of these in a really condo-flat-type situation as opposed to townhouses. Our process included working through a series of workshops that really focused on different aspects of the building. We first met to talk about site and what it meant to be part of the Washington District and Washington Commons. We actually met with some members of the Historical Society, where we learned about all kinds of things that were part of the history of the neighborhood. We also had a workshop to talk about the community spaces, and that's where we were really looking towards to how the building would support the human interaction. And of course, we talked about the individual residences, and then we came back together and talked about how all of that came together in the final design. So this has been a very group and community-designed space. We held these workshops for several weekends, and they were full-day workshops, and the energy that people were able to sustain in support of this was pretty impressive. We started looking at what are all of the goals. You can see evoke neighborliness, provide adequate parking to not adversely affect the neighborhood, they want to be sustainable, and so there's a whole bunch of goals that they were really thoughtful for that we brought into the design. They thought a lot about the neighborhood. This is just a map of Sacramento and West Sacramento, and all those little flags are all the things they already love about the area they will be surrounding, surrounded with, or things that they hope to see as the neighborhood continues to develop. It was a very participatory design. It's a little hard to see in here, but they've got little blocks that are each of the different program elements where they came together and worked in groups to come up with ideas for the design. Here's some of that work. So this is us at the end of the first workshop. We are all very excited, and it's been an absolute pleasure working together with the group. So Seth is going to give a little bit more information about how all of that came into the design that you saw when Seamus was presenting.
Yeah, so I'd like to just start with acknowledging the community's decision to purchase a lot intentionally in the Washington District. I think obviously it's a great site, but it also reflects on their desire to be a catalyst for appropriate and thoughtful growth in the district. So a quick visual reminder of the parcel, I'm sure you all are very familiar with the site, but just here's a street view with the Capitol Yards apartments on the right-hand side of each image. And a quick recap of the allowed and proposed density, mass, and building height, so you can see that we're well below the maximums that are allowed outright by the zoning code. I'm going to start with the floor plans to sort of describe our urban response. I think one of the primary objectives was to activate the street edge by placing, in this case, the building entry, the lobby, and other spaces that it will see a great deal of daily use along G Street with an emphasis on the corner. Of course, the challenge of this particular parcel with its notched corner is that to fit the required parking on the site with, at the same time, is minimizing the impact of the parking on the street led us to explore many options, but the one that was really viable was to have two separate garages. So one with an entry off of Fourth, one with an entry off of G. But of course, we've pushed those entries as far away from the intersection as we were able to do. Another important component to the ground level, the site plan for the community, was to have at least some at-grade outdoor space, which would allow them to support their outdoor activities, but also an opportunity to grow some really large trees that will provide an amenity for the site, some shade, and be a pleasant visual buffer for the adjacent neighbors. And the dash line at the top of the plan is just the boundary of the footprint of the building above. So you can see the exterior area is that top-right corner. I'm going to jump ahead to the typical residential levels. So this is third floor and fourth floor, and I think right away you'll see that the condominium units are organized in two L-shaped masses with a gap to the north and to the south. The opening to the north is really a relief to provide daylight and views. Breezes are very important, whereas the smaller hinge or gap to the south is more about a visual connection between the neighborhood and the building entry and then the community internal spaces. So every resident will have direct access to their unit via an exterior walkway, which is the lighter color. And then the private outdoor spaces, the balconies, are at the perimeter. In terms of that sense of coming together as community, that is probably strongest at the second floor, which is on the screen here now, which features a very large landscaped terrace that all the units look into. And then in cohousing, if you're looking for sort of a distinctive space, it's shown here in orange on the second floor. We often call it the common house. It's that one space in the building where the whole community can come together for an occasional meal or a celebration or a special event. And so with this being an urban cohousing model, we've placed it here on the second floor where it can be a bridging element between the internal, community-focused portion of the site and the neighborhood beyond. So that orange box, the common house, it has glazing on three sides, so it has really strong visual connections down to the building entry and to the terrace and to the street. So moving ahead to our pretty images here, this is the south elevation, and you'll probably notice right away, there's that gap between the two residential volumes. And then there's the contrasting tone and projecting volume of the common house, which is that white box. Something else to point out here is that we've tried to give the ground level of a very distinct character. It's got a strong base. And looking at the west elevation here, the setbacks are fairly close to the property line, but we've intentionally pushed the ground floor walls further away from the sidewalk. And that gives us a little bit of shade, some privacy, and extra room for landscaping, which is important for us to be able to soften those garage walls on both streets. At the building corner, you might also see a little bit of views into the building. Here, we've tried to increase the amount of glass. We've taken the sidewalk and paved it up to the building entry as an entry patio where there will be bicycle parking, probably some planters, maybe some public art, basically a friendly gesture to the neighborhood at the building entry. And then this last image is at the property interior, and I'll just quickly highlight the walkways and the terrace edge and the trellises. And then on the right hand of the image, you'll see the recessed private balconies. And these elements have a consistent color and material that is intended to help unify the building design on its many different faces. I'll skip over the elevations for now, but we can come back if you have any questions. And let's talk about the materials. So from top to bottom, the top image is our primary cladding. It's a shingle-style siding, and we've selected that for a couple of reasons. First, it's really striking in full light, but it has a nice texture and pattern in all light conditions. And second, as an acknowledgement that this building is a transitional building, a bridge between the current sort of low-scale residential character and future patterns that are more likely to have mixed uses and higher densities. We do have some stucco. It's used in focused areas, most notably the common house volume, the white box. Our accent material is wood, and that's used at the walkways and the balconies, places where it can be appreciated up close and be well-maintained. And then we have an accent color that works well with our sort of overall warm, neutral color palette. If you are curious about the shingle siding being used for multifamily projects, here are a few precedents. There's one that's local, 980 Central in the Bridge District, so certainly walk by that sometime. Note that the color there is much darker than what we're proposing, and it's got a different sort of edge condition. But if you look at the top image, I think you can appreciate the sort of pattern that that material has. And we'll also have a projecting window trim, which will provide a, excuse me, more depth to the facade at the windows. And then this last image here, my final slide, is meant to facilitate that conversation that Seamus initiated, which is about our proposed trash access. So I think it's, I hope it's understood that the waste management truck would pull up on the street, it'd have direct access to that door on the building, roll the bins out, they would be stabbed and lifted. And I think, you know, this approach is important to the community for a few reasons. I think it's, you know, it's got direct, convenient access, that's obvious. If the trash room were to move up sheet into the parking garage, it would displace probably one, maybe two parking spaces, which would, you know, potentially put a greater... one, maybe two parking spaces, which would, you know, potentially put a greater burden on the neighborhood street parking. And we understand that right now, there's no plan to issue additional residential permits in that area, though that may change in the future. And then, you know, the other option for the community would be to look at that exterior area at the back corner of the site, which would displace some of that outdoor area and potentially some of those trees. So I guess we feel like it's, this is actually a good neighbor approach. I think in terms of the impact to the landscaping strip, a six-foot walk overall is a fairly minor loss in terms of amount of landscaping. And then, just to clarify, my conversations with waste management led me to believe that even if the trash was moved into the parking garage, because it's so close to the curb, their preference would be to service the building at the curb, which would require a restricted parking area, even if the bins were rolled through the parking curb cut. So, obviously, there's a little bit more follow-up with waste management to inquire about their specific criteria, but last time I talked to them, they would prefer not to drive a stinger truck into the parking garage. So, we'll continue that conversation. I'd love to get your feedback. About to wrap up, we have a community member, Stu Wilson, who'd like to say a few words to you before we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Seth. Good evening, folks. Glad to be here today, and my name is Stu Wilson. I'm one of the members of the cohousing community. We formed a limited liability company to do the development project. I'd say it's been at least an idea for more than six years. The property's been identified for, I'd say, five years, and we acquired the property with a bit of good fortune last year. And at that point, you know, kind of the snowball started and the project was marching ahead. So we're frankly thrilled to be here this evening and to have something to present to the commission and the community. I just would say that the location of this thing is, in many ways, its best feature. Selecting this site, I think, is what drew a lot of us here and continues to draw people here. It's just a really interesting and really well-located spot. We're looking for accessibility, we want to be able to walk, we want to be able to ride bikes, we want to be able to get transit easily, you know, so there were lots of things about it that appealed. Plus, we just saw this neighborhood and this community, you know, blooming and blossoming, and we wanted to be part of that, too. So we're, you know, we're here to tell you, there's a bunch of us who are interested in doing this, who've been working on it, who've been putting our money and our time into it, and we're grateful for the city's cooperation. You guys have a great staff, and we have some great consultants who are helping us out, so we're feeling very positive about this project. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Okay. At this time, I'm going to keep the workshop open in case there are questions of the applicant. So with that, I will start with...
Over there? Or? I'm happy to start again.
That was a not me. All right, actually, I'm going to start on this side.
Chair Levy, can we see if there's any additional public comment in the audience as well? I don't know if there is or not, but...
At this time, I have no request to speak, but sure, if there are any additional requests to speak. Seeing none? Would you like to start, Ms. Austin?
I sure am happy to start, but y'all have to hear too much from me. So thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you, hopefully, future residents for all the work that you've put into this development. So I just want to highlight the three things that are important to me when we look at design, and I'll talk about a couple of things. One is that it's consistent with the neighborhood, both at a very granular level and in the broader kind of waterfront area. The financial implications are important, and I'll talk about that as far as things I'd like to see when this comes forward for other approval and considerations. And as it relates to design review, ease and expensive maintenance, I think, is going to be really important in the design review, the design choices. And then third, sustainable design, and I think that you've made a lot of nods to that. So I'll just talk about a couple of things. I think I'll jump back into the ease and expensive maintenance. So as homework for the full applicant team, I am really excited about the prospect of having cohousing here in West Sacramento. That being said, when we have things that are new in our town, I want them to succeed, because if they fail for one reason or another, it makes it more challenging for the next group to come and do something else. And I'll just share that we have really good examples at South Side Park. Davis is a lovely example, but during the economic downturn, there were some pretty significant financial impacts on the residents, and so I would like to hear more about the operations and maintenance, asset management plans. Are you going to have the building super? Is this intended for residents to be doing the maintenance? These are small questions that will matter a lot. These could result in code violations, this could result in undue financial impacts if we have lower residency occupancy than we had originally intended, and I know things are great now, but we can have an economic downturn. So just things to think about. Also, it would be helpful to provide information on the ownership structure. I'm not asking for details on the LLC, but letting us understand, you know, where does the liability lie? What type of investment are individual residents taking on? So those are kinds of things I'd like to hear about in the future. So I like the hardy shingle, hardy plank, et cetera, has a really, it's a really good material, it lasts a long time, so I think that some of the choices for materials are good ones. I also think that you've done a really good job of being consistent with the neighborhood, both in addressing the older stock, nods to the historic stock, as well as some very modern and urban approaches. So I think that's great. Something I would like to see, and this is a pretty minor thing, is I think you can still break up the massing a little bit more. One thing that I think, two things that I think can help with that, one is, and this goes to the sustainable design piece, window coverings. Particularly on the south side, I think that you can get really creative, and some of our very green buildings in the Sacramento region have very small, little, you know, kind of shade structure things. They can break up the massing of the building, and also they can have pretty significant impacts on the utility costs related to heat, so that's one thing. I would also say that I think you could also break up massing with a little bit more color. So, you know, it could be kind of the vertical stripings or some sort of additional accents. So I like the accents with the wood, I like how things that are broken up, but I think, you know, just consider that. It's not going to be a deal-breaker for me individually, but I'd like to see additional ways. Color could be an easy way to do that with the shingles. And then I'll go into the sustainable design. I really like the L shape that you were talking about. So really, conventional apartment buildings tend to be double-loaded corridors, and the design that you've provided really addresses people being able to open spaces, windows, doors, et cetera, and let the breeze come through. One of the most wonderful things about this particular area is that delta breeze. So I really want to give you a strong nod for addressing that. I think that's really wonderful. And then I have a couple of comments, mostly for staff. One is, when I was an infill developer, I consistently saw that even if the city was doing really great progressive things in our planning and policies, fire departments and waste management could really create barriers. And so let's think thoughtfully on how we can work with those partners. Certainly, the fire department is within our city, and we are active partners with waste management, to think through ways that we can support more dense, more urban styles of development that aren't so onerous when it comes to designing our communities. And then the last thing that I'll say is related to transit. So just anecdotally, I have two parents who are knocking on 70 years old, and they, my dad takes the train and rides his bike everywhere, my mom is like a super-fan of Via. My brothers are millennials and they don't own cars, or they're one car for a multi-person household. And I think that, you know, on one hand, I talked about parking, which I'd like to hear about, any interest in increasing, for example, ADA accessibility. They don't have to be designated ADA, but so that you can have openings, so that you can get in and out with an ADA vehicle. But also, what are we doing to support transit? So this is mostly a question for our city. We're doing really awesome progressive stuff, but I want to, when we have developments like these, it really underscores, on one hand, we have parking, we heard from a resident earlier, there can be challenges in providing creative transit, such as micro-mobility and on-demand, like Via can really help with that. So I don't know if you want to provide any sort of comments back? Happy to hear back from you all, from the applicant perspective, the city, and we can talk at, you know, a future time about some of those policy pieces, but...
That was a lot to digest.
Yeah, sorry.
If we want to take it in pieces, we can.
Sorry, that was a lot.
Thank you for the wonderful feedback. It really is good, it's helpful. Could you, you have a question about parking, I believe, and is it simply that, is there a possibility to have more supportive...
Well, I'm just curious, and maybe I'm wrong, but my understanding is that there was an intention to have a large proportion of the residents be retirees, and I want to make sure that we address aging in place, because I don't want you to retire, have an active lifestyle, and then have to leave. And so, for example, they are flats, glad to see that, but, you know, elevator-served, again, the spaces. What I mean is, you know, I don't want to have, on one hand, I want to have like minimized parking, but on the other hand, if we have really narrow parking spots, it will be hard to get in and out with, you know, a variety of mobility devices.
Seth's going to navigate back to the parking plan, if we can get to it, there it goes. But on the concept of aging in place, there's actually an entire design guide called Aging in Place, and we've tried to expand that from beyond aging in place to staying in place, because there's any number of things that can happen to you over the course of your life. It's not just aging that can impact your ability to stay in your home, especially when people have given such thought into their home and their community, we want them to be able to stay there. So as we move into the next phase, we're really looking at that at the unit level and looking at how we can accommodate all different kinds of people and needs and abilities by providing the right amount of space, right circulation, and we're in talks with a couple prospective members to understand what their specific needs will be. On the parking front, do you want to address that at all?
Yeah, I mean, I think you observed that we have two striped ADA spaces, which on our current interpretation is that's actually one more than the minimum that's required. Another sort of mobility, sort of just convenience component is the top parking area to the far-right, there's a sort of beige rectangle. That's a paved patio, that's sort of an informal place to unload groceries quickly, ask a neighbor to help, you know, run them upstairs, come back, get your car, park it somewhere else. It connects directly to sort of a back entrance. And I think that's just another great thing about the cohousing model, is that you know every resident, so you don't have to put a note in someone's windshield saying...
Don't park so close to my car.
Don't park so close to me. You just say, hey, friend, could you, could I borrow your parking space for the next couple of weeks, because I'm on crutches for the time being? So there's that sort of built-in flexibility. Whether or not we can, you know, make some of these spaces a little more generous, I think is a good suggestion. We can look at that.
Sounds good. And then I don't know if you wanted to respond to some of my comments around breaking up the massing, so the window coverings, for example, maybe you've already given that some thought, and there was something that I missed?
Well, see, there is one subtlety that's hard to pick up from the drawings, and that is that each of the windows, or most of the windows, have an additional panel next to them to help make the facade just feel larger. And right now, we're showing a very sort of conservative muted approach to that, but I think that's a place where we can play around a little bit more with contrast, if not color.
Yeah.
And then...
That's exactly the kind of thing I'm talking about. So right now, there are very much similar tones, and you could, you know...
And I think we're looking to find a fine balance between an assertive urban response and having the scale not be so dominant that in the interim, the building feels out of place. Yeah. We also have some Juliet balconies, which you may not have picked up on.
I did see that, and I like that.
And so that's just the ability to slide open a glass door for those few units that don't have a private outdoor space, so you can bring the inside, or bring the outside into your unit just through a gentle delta breeze. Yeah. So we'll take, I think we'll take your suggestion to break up the facade, provide more shade opportunities and explore color.
And it can be a really small, it can be a little lip, and it makes a big difference, but yeah.
We can come back and share a little bit more information about our projecting window trim detail, which I think will enhance the elevation, especially in bright sunlight.
Great. Thanks for taking all of my comments.
Commissioner Leonard?
And would you like to hear more about the ownership structure and the way the building is managed now, or would you prefer to have...
So at our next meeting, just looking at the city staff, the next one, is that a public hearing? I'm not sure what exactly the steps are.
Yeah, the next meeting would be a public hearing. And we'd be asking for...
Still planning for spring.
Why don't we wait to hear from the other commissioners, and then we can address that question? So, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Leonard? Comments, questions?
Yes. Minor, relatively minor in nature, more conversational. The, can you go back to the street view of the existing property?
Yes. I will try.
You can go faster.
I think it was one of the first slides.
Take over.
We're counting on you here.
Oh, there we go.
All these need computer screens. Single computers.
While she's working on that, oh, there we go.
Sixty-two are over, or fifty-five are over.
The street view number twelve.
That'd be sixty-two.
All right. So how are you guys dealing with utility lines and undergrounding and poles, transformers, things like that?
Pretty simple. We have a staff request to underground all utilities. So, for example, top image, you see a pole at the property corner.
The one closest to us, or the one to corner G?
So the one furthest away from us will be removed.
Okay.
And we've been asked to underground the utilities up to closer to us, that pole, which will probably end up being replaced and just moved to a better location.
Okay.
And...
Well, by better location, you mean it's going to be within a couple of feet of where it is now?
Within a few feet of that general area, right. And then...
And your transformer is going right here as well?
That is, behind the sidewalk is our proposed location for a transformer.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. On the transformer, the, I didn't see on the site plan, I didn't see any screening between the transformer and the street. Is there any plan for that?
Certainly can be. I think there's also a question of access to the transformer by the utility and the ability to pick it up. Though we can work with Seamus to get the criteria for screening if there is.
Side note, it's one of those things, it shows up in the code to screen all equipment, even ground equipment, and it's just a very minor thing. Next question, though, on equipment, on the rooftop. Next time we come back, I don't know if you've gotten to the point yet where you've chosen what your condensers are, or how they're, I'd like to see how they look. They might be offset enough, I saw on the rooftop plan that they seem to be relatively central to the surface area, but they'll still be, I don't know if they'll still be visible in a building that high, but just something to take a look at. I mean, we're not talking about six-foot screening or anything, but just be mindful of being able to see that from the street. We have a, in the Bridge District, when you're driving over the highway to exit, you can see all of those things from the air, but when you're on the ground, you don't see them very well, so just something to watch out for on pedestrian level. And has there been any thought yet to electric vehicle charging stations in the spots? So does that have a certain number, like a minimum number that you have to do?
So this is a very pro-electric vehicle group. We're trying not to put them at every single...
And has there been any thought yet to electric vehicle charging stations in the spots? So did, does that have a certain number, like a minimum number that you have to do?
So this is a very pro-electric vehicle group. We're trying not to put them at every single space, but I think right now, our plans call for six, three in each garage, and we're hoping to structure them such that a couple spots can share, can share the chargers. So it should be more than is required.
Okay. All right. Well, those were my only questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sternfeld, would you like to go next?
Yeah, so I'm going to take a slightly different approach in comments. I think you guys are coming back for the official request for setbacks, deviation, and design review, so I appreciate getting up, doing the workshop today to kind of see things in advance and have some public eyes on it as well. I don't have a lot of comments on design. I did want to say a couple of things, though. One, I want to extend some sincere appreciation to the group of residents who are behind this project, because I know this has been something that's been talked about in this community for quite some time, and you guys have put your money behind it at this point. And we have not recognized that yet, but I think it's really important that we do, that this is something everyone wants, but people have to get up and do, and you guys are doing it. So you've, you've put, I'm assuming, your savings and your, some of your retirement on the line to not just purchase this property, but hire a design and architecture firm to get to where you are today and get through the planning process, and that, that does not go unnoticed at all. And so I just want to, I want to express my personal admiration, and I think my colleagues will share that as well, for doing what you're doing and actually doing what you believe in. That's super important, and I love that this community welcomes that and aspire and wishes that more folks would do that and step up in that way. So that aside, I think that one of the key things for tonight was to specifically speak to the issue of the setbacks and the deviations, and I don't have any concerns with either one of those. We've approved setbacks in this community that are similar already, getting closer to the street front. I'm fine with that. The deviations from the exist, the existing Washington-specific plan, I'm fine with if staff supports them. And specific to the question of the trash, it looks weird in some ways compared to what we typically think about how these things should be, but I actually have no problem with it at all. Like, it actually makes a lot of sense to me, and I think we've had some lengthy conversation about plannerships on this commission, and we don't really care for them. So, or at least there's some inconsistency around, like, benefits of plannership, plannerships versus costs, and what is the beauty of grass that we're paying to water and, you know, et cetera. So I'm totally fine with the setup the way it is. The one question I had about design, though, is around the number of bike parking spaces, because I think I counted, there's three stalls out front that are like for anyone, and the garage, there's like a set for like eight, and then there's like a closet for another 42. So is that, is that like a true need of the community to have like 50-plus bike parking spot? I mean, that's, it's awesome if it is, it just kind of caught me off guard and...
You can speak to the number of bikes that people typically...
I mean, we, we workshopped this, and we went around the room, and everybody's like, I got three, and I've got a stretch bike, you know, with the place where kids can ride on the back, I've got an e-bike, and so that's, that represents the entire expectation.
That's awesome. I was surprised, it was kind of surprising to me and cool that it's actually being included in the design, because one of the things we've talked a lot about when we get some similar types, well, not cohousing, but apartment projects come forward, condo projects, and there's like very limited bike parking, we're always like, where's the bike parking? So the fact that you guys heard your, your customers and built it there is really cool. So I have no other comments. I really appreciate the legwork and the, the work that's gone into this project thus far. I look forward to it coming back here soon to have a more formal conversation about design review and deviations, but great work so far.
Thank you, Andrew. Ms. Blom?
Thank you for your presentation. That's a great presentation. I did have a question about the trash, if we could go back to that slide.
If you go to the, do you want that or the rendering?
The, the rendering.
The rendering at Fourth Street. That's great.
Oh, this is, that, oh, yeah. That's the one you need.
Our fancy new computers seem to be a little sluggish.
We're architects, we like white space. Looks like it forwarded the slide one more.
That went really fast, sorry.
It's, slide 20?
Yes. There we go. Thank you, Katie.
So from here, where is the trash on this one?
And it's different than the site plan, which has a driveway.
It is different than the site plan, which is my comment.
Yeah. Oh, it's this right here, right? Yeah, so it's not broken, broken up there.
So the strip isn't there, right?
You're correct. This rendering was prepared prior to the change that occurred during completeness review to put that direct connection from the trash room door to the curb. Our original proposal was that the bends would roll down the sidewalk 15, 20 feet, and then to the vehicular entrance, which, you know, Seamus and, and his colleagues brought up some good comments, which is, that's just going to beat up the sidewalk, and that's when waste management suggested the smaller curb cut directly opposite of the door.
Okay.
But the door is this door right here, right Seth?
Correct.
Yeah, so this is the, the trash door, and the curb cut would be right in the middle.
Sorry.
The trash door is right here, and the curb cut would be kind of right where this bush is in that zone.
Okay. And so it would eliminate that parking space, and then on trash days, would eliminate next to it? Or...
I believe that Belina's request was that there would be one, equivalent of one on-street parking space that would be striped, and the parking would be restricted. Whether that's no parking ever, or just no parking on certain days, is not yet clear to me.
Yeah, it would be no parking just in that timeframe. However, that does need to be enforced, so there could be situations where a car is, you know, parked there and not supposed to be.
Is there a need for loading-unloading?
I was going to say passenger loading.
Can we just fix that by making it white striped?
Microtransit would be great.
Yeah.
Till he's shaking his head.
Yeah, we could, we could do loading-unloading, we just don't want a car blocking the access there where the waste management have to roll the cart out.
Okay, and as you were saying, if, if it were in the garage, we would still have that same issue of needing to roll it out?
I think we'll probably need to circle back and confirm that, but at least, this was, again, maybe three months ago, when I was talking to waste management, they may have had new reviewers since that time, but the striped, no parking, restricted parking zone would move to the left of this image and just be right next to the entrance into the parking garage, so that the bends could be pulled out from the garage, you know, manually, and then loaded in the traditional manner that we were, were going to use here, just shifted closer to us in this image.
Okay.
The, the potential issue of servicing trash inside the parking garage is that it would increase the height of the building, which seems like a, a big ask for a small convenience for the hallway.
Yeah. Okay, and then if you didn't have the trash in that space, like, what could that be used for? Just...
There is never enough storage.
Okay, so, okay.
For the residents, so that's something we would probably explore.
Okay. And then, this might be a question for the residents, is just as far as related to ownership, just how many owners you have in, in, that have bought in, and, but I, I don't know if there are other...
That's okay, Mr. Wilson, if you would like to come up.
Sure, thanks. At the moment, we have 11 members who are invested in the project. We have a couple of more who we're calling explorers. There's a kind of a period of time people get acquainted and understand what we're doing here and make a decision about participating. Our goal, for financial reasons, is that by the time we're ready to secure a loan for construction, we'll have two-thirds to three-quarters of these subscribed, and the funds will be there, so.
And what, what is the buy-in amount?
Right, so what we tell people is you should, you should be prepared to take your 20% down payment and have it invested in this project before we get a construction loan. And then there's a, there's a schedule of payment over time to cover the bills as we progress.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I didn't mean to cut you off on that, completely, just on, just on that one question.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think I might have more.
Floor is still yours.
I mean, you cut me off, Mr. Taylor. I think that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Just one more follow-up question on the garage areas. Are the garage doors solid? Or are they, do they have airflow? Is there going to be circulation issue?
We have a number of openings on the perimeter of both garages.
Okay.
Which provide cross breezes, so there would be no mechanical ventilation required.
Okay. I was just thinking, if you did have some requirement, I don't know where this would all come from, for the garage door itself to be perforated, it might be a design review question, if it isn't a solid garage door. Just something to look at.
Does the commission have a preference on terms?
If you've already incorporated airflow into the design, I'm probably less concerned about that. At the same, I, I would be more concerned about the aesthetics of a very modern door and making sure that it blends with the, the building. As Ms. Austin pointed out, I think you did a good job of incorporating features from, throughout the neighborhood, which is difficult, because this particular neighborhood has houses from every era, as well, from Victorian to, to present, and so there's everything from very old to modern. So I, I did, I do think you did a great job, so. If I have the floor, I think this is a great project. Not only that, I think it's a much-needed project, and I, I don't see any problem of, of this being filled. In fact, I, you know, I was excited thinking about this for family members. I think this is a really great project. I also appreciate the detail in the design. So there, I have two concerns on this. I'll echo some of the other commissioners. I don't have problems with the setbacks, and I do realize that we need to vote on this prior to the update to the Washington-specific plan, so it might be a little awkward, so it's important that we do this as a variance. And I also, I don't really have any problems with the, the trash where it is. In fact, I think it would be weird to have trash in with the cars, so keeping it separate, I think would be neat and tidy. The, the bottom level, so here, here are my, my big topic, issues. I always want to make sure that these types of buildings don't create dead zones on the first floor, and you spoke to activating the first floor specifically along G Street, and I definitely appreciate that. I appreciate the attention paid to the corner and activating that. I want to make sure that that cement wall that's on the Fourth Street is adequately screened, looks nice, because otherwise, it's, it's a wall, it's just a solid wall. So that is, that's one of my, my bigger concerns, is making sure we don't create a dead zone. Also, a cement wall is prone to bad things.
People drawing on it with chalk.
Or chalk, yes. I actually like chalk drawing, so. I think, so we've, we've had a lot of good input tonight. Generally, I, I think this is fabulous project, so good input, input on window coverings, and input on need for transit, coming from staff, what's coming up maybe to help, help with this project, input on screening, utility boxes, roofs. I did have, actually, going back one, one more question. I was typically focused on the, the design for this, but I'm curious whether there's an elevator included in the design. I didn't see it.
It's by the trash.
By the mail, sorry, by the mail.
Okay, great. That, I think, so that...
I could tell from the roof.
The roof is where it's...
Yeah, it says elevator to the roof.
So you can take the elevator to the roof.
I saw the intention. I saw that. Now, now, now I, now I remember that. Rooftop decks around here, by the way, they're, they're fabulous, so if you ever did want to upscale. Any other, any other comments? I won't cut you off, I promise.
I, I do have a question about transit. I think it's for staff, on, on the streetcar that died, and now it's something else? Or is that, did it come back?
The streetcar name...
I knew we were waiting for funding, and then ended up being more...
Yeah, we're absolutely still working on that one, and we're also currently reviewing the Yola bus. They've done a, what they call their comprehensive operational analysis, so all that stuff is very much still in play right now.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public workshop, and hopefully you have what you need from us, and we look forward to seeing you sometime in the spring. Do we have a date when we think this might come back?
Hopefully in April. They resubmitted their application a few weeks ago, so that's still under review, but we do owe them comments back here in the next week and a half, so depending on what kind of comments we get, if any, if it's deemed complete, we will be coming back before you April.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Next item on the agenda is item number three. This is a public hearing regarding proposed variances for reductions in landscaping requirements and setbacks at 4657 West Capitol Avenue, and Mr. Tilly, this is recommended for continuance.
Correct, so we would ask you to open the public hearing, then vote to continue it to March 5th.
Okay, before we take a motion on that, can I request, so one thing that hit me on this is a request for the number and size of trees. Could we include analysis on this one relative to our general plan and climate change and resiliency?
Yes.
Thank you. I need a motion to continue. Moved by Commissioner Sternfeld, seconded by Vice Chair Austin, all in favor, please, seated by Saint Aye.
Aye.
opposed, so moved to the March 5th meeting. Okay, next on the agenda is item number four. This is a public hearing regarding Resolution 23 PC regarding amendments to Title 17 zoning of the municipal code pertaining to accessory dwelling units and metal storage containers. Ms. Allen?
Good evening, Chair Lee Biggins, members of the commission. This item is a request for some changes to the zoning code, which is a portion of the municipal code as it relates to accessory dwelling units and metal storage containers. In terms of the accessory dwelling units, the state legislature last year was really quite busy and passed a number of pieces of legislation in regards to ADUs, as they see this as a way to create additional affordable housing within the state. With their changes, which became effective January 1st, essentially, our portion of the zoning code, which relates to ADUs, fell out of compliance with state law, so this is a portion of the zoning code changes, is a cleanup effort to bring our code in line with the state code. Just to give you some highlights of some of the things that are changing, the size of ADUs has actually increased. Our ordinance currently says that their maximum size is 700 square feet, or half the size of the house that's there. With the new regulations, a one-bedroom unit could be a maximum of 850 square feet. Two or more bedroom unit can be up to 1,000... Two or more bedroom unit can be up to 1,000 square feet. And if you have an ADU on a property that's over one acre in size, it can be a maximum of 1,200 square feet. Some other changes, the legislature reduced the maximum setbacks side and rear to four feet. And in a lot of situations, no parking is required for the ADUs. In instances such as where there's transit within a half a mile, if you're taking a garage and converting it into an ADU, there's no requirement to replace the parking that was in the garage, et cetera. And so we're recommending these changes to the ADU standards, as I said, to bring them in conformance with state law. The other item, the metal storage containers, when we were going through the process of updating the zoning code after the general plan was adopted, unfortunately, we had a little boo-boo. We left this provision out of the new code. The old code had a provision which prohibited permanently installed metal storage containers in residential, commercial, and mixed-use and waterfront zones. And that was because we had added it a few years prior due to the fact that we had had quite a few complaints from neighbors about them, that they created blight, et cetera. And so when we noticed that this had been left out, we decided it was important and we are proposing to put it back pretty much the way it was before. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Are there any questions of staff before I open the public hearing?
Just one. Does our code, does our proposed code deviate in any way from the state's requirements that are constantly changing?
In regards to the ADUs?
Yeah, any specific part of our code that we're proposing to change here and adding language, all of that is completely in alignment with state code?
We have gone over the ADU regulations very thoroughly, and we've asked our city attorney to weigh in to make sure that we have made all the appropriate revisions to it.
Okay, and then can you explain on the required parking, where the exception doesn't apply when there's a carport or a covered parking space that's demolished? I'm a little confused.
That actually was language that we took from the wording in the state code itself, the new state code.
Okay.
I can't see too many instances where a carport would be converted into an ADU, but since that was how they worded it, we followed their lead on that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Austin?
I've got a question and then a comment. So the question is, these storage containers, so my, I've heard of some interesting ideas floating around, mostly over the last couple of years, not terribly recently, but about using these storage containers, you know, for restaurants and other kind of social amenity things. And so would these prohibit that? Because I know that there's some really innovative stuff, but I also know that we have concerns as a city. I see Tilly, Mr. Tilly kind of, do you, would you like her to respond, or do you have some comments?
I'll defer to Ms. Allen on this one, and I'll follow up if needed.
The code as we've written it had to do with them being used for storage of equipment, of overflow.
Not activity spaces.
Yeah, so if somebody wanted to do a midtown beer garden, or trying to think of the other ones where they've been done elsewhere, they still would be able to, because we wouldn't consider that to be storage. That would be a restaurant or whatever.
Okay, so that's helpful. Thank you for that clarification. And then my comment is around these ADUs. To be perfectly honest, I was like, how much difference could this make? And I just want to share that, I was talking to a colleague of mine who works in the planning department in the city of LA, and they said that one-third of their, like, approved units or built-out units, I forget which one it was, were ADUs. And so they can represent a significant amount of growth. So I'm actually excited that we're addressing this, and I hope that it's something that can help increase our housing stock and the diversity of the housing types we have here in the city.
We've definitely seen a real uptick in the number of ADUs, you know, coming our way when the state law changed last year. And then I expect even more this year as the state law has progressed and I think really attacked a lot of the things that made ADUs, you know, impractical in many cases, which were really fees and parking. So we've seen a lot more of them now, and we're already working on, with someone, about doing a general ADU as well, so even a three-unit one on a single-family parcel.
Great, thank you for that update.
Any questions of staff on my left before we open the public hearing? And we can always come back if you have comments.
I don't know if there's an answer to this, but we spent so much time going through the zoning ordinance. Any thoughts on how we missed this one?
Right?
Like, I mean, we literally asked for a red line, right?
Yes.
And like, I combed that document 100 times and don't-
Yeah, it was a very short, obscure provision in our previous zoning code. So I'll take the blind share of the blame for missing this one. But it has become an issue again, so we do believe it's important to get this back into our municipal code the way it used to be and was there for many years.
Yeah, no, and to be clear, my question wasn't to look for blame. It was just like, I feel like we all had such a vested interest in reviewing the document, that I was just kind of like, huh, we missed this? Because it seems such like an obvious thing to have, so, thank you.
So this is probably, your answer's probably going to be similar to Commissioner Leonard's, but for the parking exception for subdivision D, it seems counterintuitive to me. But is that also something you took straight from the statute?
Section-
So it says if parking permits are required but not offered to the ADU occupant, then parking isn't required?
Section eight, subsection two, H2, subsection D.
Oh, two D, sorry, yeah.
I imagine that provision is in there under a scenario where maybe parking permits are perhaps, in some communities, maybe only offered to property owners rather than those who may be, you know, renting, you know, an ADU. So the clear policy objective here is to not have parking requirements interfere with the production of ADUs.
And then for utilities in section G, what if there's a septic system? Are there different requirements to make sure that the septic system can serve whatever addition's going to be using it?
Well, the wells and septic are not governed by the city. They're actually governed by Yolo Environmental Health. And so it would just need to meet whatever their criteria is for-
Okay, so they'll have to get clearance from the county?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have no request to speak. See, would we be okay with a, okay, please come up. If you'd like to come up, please state your name.
And fill out a comment card when you're done.
Oh, there are one of these on the side, prior to leaving, if you could fill one out, that would be great.
Yeah, I had gone to a little workshop this summer with some architects and local people interested in ADUs. So I had heard some of this information coming through about the laws changing and stuff. So I had heard then, I heard it again tonight, about reduced requirement for some impact fees, like parking. And I think she mentioned fees, nothing very specific. But I wondered at the time, I love the idea of the ADUs, but I wondered at the time about what that meant, really, that you kind of don't make them have parking. I mean, it seemed like, I guess my point that I'm trying to ask about is that it seems like ADUs would impact a neighborhood, like they talked about fees for schools, as I recall, I heard. And some of these people that were presenting almost sounded like they were lobbyists or something. But I just wondered at the time, is that a good idea? And since, you know, I could be impacted by ADUs, I'm just kind of curious about how that, the idea behind that, if I got that right at all. I didn't say my name, I think I was supposed to say my name, sorry. My name is Mary DeYoung. So that was my, what I'd like to know about, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. DeYoung. Mr. Tilly or legal counsel? Do we have a response?
Yeah, the parking stuff in here is clearly set up in a way to try, clearly the intent is to facilitate ADUs as a source of additional infill housing. And parking has perhaps been a barrier to these units historically. So the legislature has provided for numerous exceptions to require any parking, you know, whatsoever. And they're clearly quite liberal in their exceptions. The other aspect is fees. For the most part, we won't be able to charge impact fees on them. We're still working on it, what it refers to, what it means, school fees, as Ms. DeYoung brought up. But by and large, these have been, I think, the two biggest breakthroughs to help us see the number of ADUs that we're seeing now, which is still not a ton, but it's a lot more than we used to.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any additional comments or deliberation. I'm going to start on my left, Mr. Sternfelds, no more, Ms. Sablon? No?
Yeah.
Mr. Leonard, Ms. Austin.
I'll, in that case, for ready, make a motion to move staff, move staff recommendation, which includes sequel exemption as described in the staff report and adopting Resolution 20-3 PC. I have one minor edit on page two of the ordinance, removing the strike-through of five under item number, let's see, section E setbacks, number two, accessory dwelling units, that sort of second or third line down. So with that minor edit, I move staff approval.
I'm sorry, clarification needed. You want it to say four or five feet?
I think there's a typo, and I just want to make sure that we don't have an issue.
Yeah.
So the strike-through, just making sure that the remove, the five is indeed what is removed.
It is supposed to be four.
Okay. Remove the strike out, yes.
Remove the strike through, it's a little bit like, negative.
It is, staff recommendation is moved by Vice Chair Austin with an edit to, sorry, flipping pages.
Section E two.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sablon. All in favor, please sign by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing then passes unanimously. And with that, we move to informal discussion. I do have a couple of things I'd like to bring up, but I would happily hear from others first.
I just have one quick thing. So Mr. Laffey mentioned that the Washington plan was coming soon. So I was just going to ask if we could get that several weeks before the meeting?
Large reading things, give us lots of time.
We're currently working on the administrative draft.
Okay.
And so it's going to be a little while before it's ready for your eyes, but as soon as we have a good copy of it, we will get it to you, because it is kind of a lengthy document.
Yeah, no, we always endeavor to, when we have a larger document like that, to try to get it to you at least an extra week ahead of your normal packet delivery, because it is a lot to go over. And when we bring that forward, we'll try not to have too many other items on the agenda so we can give it the time that it's due, because there's a lot of good new stuff coming in that prime.
Thank you.
So we heard during section A, presentation by Mr. Ron Price, if and when you decide to bring forward a discussion or something to address the questions that he raised, could you also make sure that you bring any information that we might need to know about the, possibly any impacts by the, any grant requirements that we have? I don't know if there's any, like, state grants that might have a bearing on parking.
Yeah, barring an appeal, that project would not be coming to the planning commission.
Good to know.
It's under for design review, which will be ultimately acted upon by our director. And that is something that we will be needing to do fairly soon so that they will be able to submit for their funding round for that particular project, which I know is due in early March, so we are getting close on that one.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, there are a couple of procedural things that I'd like to discuss with the commission. And one is, of course, what do we see on our staff reports? And what information does staff bring to us? We actually can provide input on that and provide some guidance of what we would like to see to make some decisions. On one of the items tonight, number three, this kind of came up for me. And specifically, I would like to request that the staff reports include, for each project, an evaluation of climate change, relate and our policy on sustainable growth and resiliency. I know staff already does this, but I would actually like to, I would like to personally see the analysis called out, or a summary of it called out, very, you know, unofficial policy, how to say this, unofficial policy review checklist of some sort. But I don't want to just state this, so I'm looking for input from commissioners on whether or not they feel this is appropriate, and whether or not they would like to see any additional changes in our staff report.
So I support your recommendation. One thing is, I think that this may be something that evolves. So we've talked about this before. We have Mayor's Commission on Climate Change and the Climate Action Plan. And I think that documents like those can help identify whether, to whether or to what extent a project is advancing some of those goals. Not that we necessarily need metrics, but, you know, that, you know, some of these things, for example, you know, parking ratios, density, things like that are things that we can call out perhaps in the analysis or background sections.
I'm taking notes. Does the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, does that result in policy?
I will defer to, I can give you my version, but Mr. Tilly's been really involved in that.
So the Mayor's Commission is winding down. They have two more meetings, one in March and one in May. And they will, at the May meeting, they're scheduled to publish their final report. And so at that point in time, it will then become up to the individual cities to take that information and incorporate it somehow, some way into their own plans and processes. So we're, since we have been working on our cap and, you know, trailing the Mayor's Commission, we're operating on the premise that we will be considering the, you know, the lion's share at a minimum of what has come out of the Mayor's Commission in our own cap work. And so we will need to get some further direction from the council on that in relatively short order before we get too far on our cap. But that does appear to be where we're headed. And everything with the Mayor's Commission is a matter, is public. You can go on the local government commission's website and see, they have adopted, you know, probably 90% of their overall recommendations at this point, so it is all available to the public. And the public may also attend their meetings. Next one is March 11th, and it's at CalSTRS, right here in town.
So if they're adding this, if staff will be adding this analysis to a staff report, what are they looking at? Are they looking at the old Climate Action Plan and evaluating things there, or are they?
It's a really good question, because we're in the process of-
How do you implement that?
What I would propose to do, at least in the interim, is to- What I would propose to do, at least in the interim, is to, you know, tape a deeper look at our existing climate and resiliency policies that are in the general plan now. And there's clearly going to be a lot of work and movement on this particular topic through the rest of this year. Even with having to work on housing element this year, we'll need to put some additional resiliency policies into general plan for, I think it's SP 379, if I'm not mistaken. And then, and that'll be going on in parallel with the work we're already doing on our Climate Action Plan. So I do expect there to be quite a bit further discussion about this topic throughout the rest of the year.
Just to make sure that we're not sending, well, we believe in the, the intent of that analysis, that we're not sending staff down and make-work rabbit trail. That adds way too much time to an already pretty burdensome workload. So just to make sure that we're very clear on the objectives and what we're looking for in that analysis, so.
Well, yes, I appreciate your comments. And we also want, we also want to make sure that, you know, we're going against anything that's already existing and on the books. We, you know, we can't, you know, just sort of make up additional criteria on the fly to gauge projects by, but there should be enough substance in the general plan policies in this regard to get you what, what you need for subsequent projects.
I have two, two sort of goals on this. One is to help our understanding of each project, and two is to help understand, or help applicants understand our goals on climate, I'm sorry, is it carbon neutrality? Climate neutrality?
Carbon neutral, neutrality, that works.
And give a heads up, basically, it's just to give a heads up to what we're looking for as well, to the applicants.
Yeah, it's just an example along that road. What we're moving so far is like for the, the workshop project that was here before, we asked them upfront about doing no gas in that project, and they at least at that time indicated that, yes, you know, we won't, we don't want to do any gas, we're, we're all about sustainability also. And we're getting a lot more traction on that particular topic as an example, and other projects as well.
Do I have at least head nods, this is okay to request?
And like I said, it's evolving, so I think it's like, we'll, we'll kind of see how it manifests and then maybe provide some feedback.
Okay, so this is a request to staff to include in the evaluation, and I'm just thinking brief. This isn't large.
Right.
And this is summarizing your existing analyses already, that you already do, but we want to make it a little bit more prominent to evaluate climate change, sustainability, and resilience, and whether it forwards the findings or actions of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. Was that a no?
What, no?
Okay, yes. All right, that's it. I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave it with that one. Anything else?
I'm not officially in here.
I'm not yet, apparently. Looking for a motion to adjourn? Okay, thank you, everybody.
I was listening.